Introductions of our board. I'm Helen Joyce, Chair of the Board. Travis?
Good evening. Travis Thompson from Stratum and Vice Chair of the Corporate Board.
Maggie?
Good evening. Maggie Bishop, Exeter.
Kim?
Hi, Kim Meyer from Exeter.
Dave?
Hi, David Slavka, Exeter.
Paul?
Good evening. Paul Bauer from New Fields.
Bob?
Good evening. Bob Hall from Kensington.
Melissa?
Hi, Melissa Litchfield from Bradwood.
And Kathy?
Hi, Kathy McNeil from East Kingston.
Thank you. And our building administrators, Mike?
Mike Monahan, Principal at the High School.
Thank you. Patty?
Good evening. Patty Wans, Principal of Cooperative Middle School.
Sharon?
Sharon Wilson, Principal at Seco School of Technology.
And I would like to welcome the newest member of our SAU 16 Administrative Team, Michelle.
Hi, Michelle Votto, Director of Exeter Adult Education. Thanks for having me.
You're very welcome. Thank you for being here tonight. And our SAU Administrative Team, David?
Hi, David Ryan, Superintendent of Schools.
Thank you. I don't think Molly is back yet. We'll go to Michelle.
Good evening. Michelle Larson, Assistant Director of Finance and Operations.
Thank you. I'm looking to see if Rusty's here. There he is.
I am here. Good evening. Rusty Lister, Director of Facilities.
Thank you. And Dan, would you like to introduce yourself, please?
Hi, Dan Westmullen, HVAC for SAU 16.
Thank you very much. I don't believe I've left anybody out, have I? Has everybody been introduced this evening who's here? Great. Thank you so much. We'll begin. I just wanted to explain a little bit about public input tonight and ask first if Dr. Ryan had received any messages for public input for the board meeting this evening.
I've received no input for this evening.
Thank you. What we'll do this evening, at the end of the meeting, we normally have public input. We're going to do it as we normally would do in an in-person meeting and allow folks to make any comments that they may want to in the chat function, but there'll be no Q and A. So I would ask folks in the public who have any questions that they might have to please address those questions outside of this meeting to the building or the SAU administrators. I see Molly is here. Hello, Molly. You want to introduce yourself, please? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Molly O'Keefe, the Director of Finance and Operations.
Thank you very much. All right. What I'd like to do is start with our approval of minutes, our August 17th Public Minutes. If you have had a chance to look at those, if there are any corrections or omissions, I would entertain those now. Paul? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Helen. I had two edits, and I spoke to Mr. Thompson about this before the meeting to confirm he agreed with me that there's two places where questions of mine were attributed to Travis, so I just wanted to address those. On page two, the third paragraph begins, "Mr. Thompson asked to hear more about staffing and how that will affect the in-person return." That was actually me, so that should be Mr. Bauer. And then the other one is on page four. The second paragraph under 3.4, Principal Juan's presentation, says, "Mr. Thompson asked if there could be outdoor lessons." Again, that was me, so that should be Mr. Bauer.
Thank you, Paul. Any other corrections or omissions? All right then. Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the August 17th Public Minutes as amended.
So moved.
Thank you. Paul, do we have a second on that?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please signify by raising your hands. Alrighty. Opposed? Abstentions? All right. I think we were all there that night, so that was a unanimous vote. Thank you. Our August 25th Minutes, are there any corrections or omissions on those? That was the school board meeting on athletics and extracurricular activities. Yes, Paul?
Me again. So in reading through the minutes, the motion that I had made on athletics, I didn't feel like was clearly captured here. Fortunately, the meeting was recorded, so I actually went ahead and watched the meeting again before this to make sure that my recollection was correct as far as what the motion was. So I want to read off what the motion should appear as, and obviously, if anyone thinks that it's not right, let me know. But I did watch the video. I think what it should say is, "Mr. Bauer made a motion that CMS have an intramural season for all fall sports teams, with Coach Lewis having the option of scheduling scrimmages with outside teams when feasible." Period. At the high school, all fall sports teams will have an interscholastic season, with the caveat that any opposing teams not following sufficient COVID-19 protocols may be removed from the season schedule by Coach Ball and Dr. Ryan. And then finally, that last sentence, "All student athletes required to sign a liability waiver before participating." That's accurate, but then the last part was missed, which was, "And spectator limitations as outlined by Coach Ball are put in place." So again, I think that the general spirit of it was there, but just the way it was taken down was not clear to me. So I wanted to make sure that the language was clear as far as what we had voted on.
No, I would agree, Paul. Something as important as that especially should be word for word, so thank you for that correction. Are there any other corrections or omissions? All right. Seeing none, I will entertain a motion again to accept the August 25th Minutes as amended.
So moved.
Thank you, Travis. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Paul. All in favor, again, please signify by raising your hands. Opposed? Abstentions? Kimberly, you're not on, so I'm assuming you're okay with it. I don't see her there. Okay, we're good. All right then. She's not here to vote, apparently. She must have stepped away. So perhaps we should have one abstention on that, do you think, Dr. Ryan? We'll do that. All right then.
I would agree. And Lieutenant Bartel, who does our minutes, has asked Mr. Bauer if he could send the wording of that text, just so that we capture it.
Yeah. Who do you want me to email that to?
If you could email it to me, I'll forward it to Joanna. She takes our minutes for us. It's always helpful to go to the replay.
Perfect. I'll do it right after the meeting.
Kim's on now.
Thank you. We voted you abstaining on the minutes, Kim, but we're good. We're fine. Thank you. All right. Superintendent's report. Dr. Ryan?
Thank you very much, Mrs. Joyce. We opened school. Last week, we had almost 5,000 students return to SAU 16 schools. We've, you know, we had some glitches as we anticipated. There were some pains in the morning of technology, which I know our technology staff has been working around the clock, as have our administrators, to ensure that those were fixed. Overall, the opening was overwhelmingly positive, at least considering the messages that we've been receiving here at the SAU office and the feedback that I know a lot of our principals and teachers have been receiving as well. Naturally, we'll continue to work through any of the issues that are outstanding. We also have received emails of concern from some parents who are still wondering why we are in a remote setting, and we continue to work through our response in terms of crafting that and getting those back to those families as we've been trying to do ever since we did go to remote back in March 13th. But thus far, very positive opening, first five days. I've been able to get to half of our schools in the last couple of days. I know our principals and the cooperative will be able to talk about, you know, some of the highlights of opening and seeing students and staff. I'll leave that to them. I know athletics continues to schedule. As a matter of fact, our golf team just had a duel match the other day, and they won both. Well done, Mike. We're waiting on other schedules to emerge. It's very difficult for athletic directors to schedule games, and so they're continuing. Billy's still working on that. We've done a lot of work around diversity, equity, inclusion, and justice. Every one of our schools now in the SAU has a team that is committed to broadening our social justice work at all levels. We're going to be working with Toine Augustus, who right now is on sabbatical from Phillips Exeter Academy. She's an Exeter resident. She's been working with the DEIJ Committee at Lincoln Street and Main Street, and we're going to be asking her to facilitate some cooperation between all of our teams and getting all 11 of our building teams together, including a DEIJ team from Exeter Adult Education. So we're very pleased to have such an avid and spirited group of people that really believe in ensuring social justice across the SAU. We've expanded our community partner work. Everybody knows the new CEO at the YMCA is the Spitfire, and she's really good at roping people into doing things. I've now been participating in their strategic planning process for this year. I actually was quite impressed with the setup, the agenda, the facilitation, utilization of the Lapiana Living Strategic Plan in the work that we did. It was new to me. It was very exciting to be working on that. I have some homework I have to do, and I'll be doing that, but naturally, it's great to be a partner with the Y, given how we're working through providing childcare for our families in SAU 16 as we, you know, continue our return-to-school plan. So my appreciation goes out to Kim and the YMCA for all their work with us as partners. Another group is EHR, Exeter Health Resources, and court physicians had another meeting today with some of the representatives, including Dr. Johnson, our consulting physician, to talk about how we would be able to build testing into all of our schools utilizing a CLEO waiver, which is a laboratory. It's a clinical laboratory. We forgot what the I stands for, amendment, which means using rapid testing and being able to test or arrive at the results from those tests onsite in your school. So be able to conduct surveillance testing and ensure that you're maintaining that below positive percent that's within your community. A lot of that, we discussed or wrote about in our Saturday update two Saturdays ago with the Department of Health and Human Services Guidelines, but also looking at how we can build up staff capacity utilizing some of the occupational therapy programming they have at Exeter Health Resources. And so we met with a representative from their office today, and it's the Center of Occupational Employee Health, working as a partner with SAU 16 to help work with our staff who are really questioning whether or not they're able to return based on some issues, whether they're health-related or there are household health issues, being able to get that extra medical opinion, that expert opinion, and helping us build up that staff capacity. So our thanks go to Exeter Health Resources and court physicians as well, all of which is part of our return-to-school plan, which is underway. Again, staff capacity and surveillance testing being our two biggest project areas. And then I would be asking this board for some guidance on furloughs. We will have a few furloughs from the cooperative, and Molly and I and Dr. Campbell talked through it, and none of us have ever had to... We've never been in this situation, as none of you. We've never placed anyone on furlough before. And so typically, a superintendent would make a recommendation to the board for, or nomination to the board for hiring, or a recommendation for termination. And all other aspects of the personnel process, so paid administrative leave, unpaid administrative leave, it's the superintendent informing the board. So we're in a bit of a middle situation when it comes to furlough. And a furlough is that the employee will continue to receive benefits, will not receive their paycheck, and will still need to pay their portion of their health insurance benefits. And so we have a few employees that we've tried to find alternative work or other assignments within the SAU, and we've not been able to do so based either on their qualifications, their background, their ability to perform the job. And so we're in a position now where we have a couple of furloughs that we need to talk about. My recommendation would be that we inform the board of that through PP and C in our October 6th meeting, but not have it necessarily be a recommendation to the board that requires board action. And I, at this time, would ask the board for a little bit of guidance or input on that.
Thank you, David. Are there questions for Dr. Ryan relative to the furloughs? Or comments that you'd like to make? I do have a question, David, for you. Are these COVID-related, and do they come under the guidelines of the federal laws that we've been talking about with regard to requests from teachers for accommodations? Or are these something totally different?
These are employees who do not fall under any COVID-related absence requests or accommodation. These are positions in the districts that, while we are on remote status, don't have a tangible impact on the operations of the school on a day-to-day basis. We value every single one of our employees. We think every single one of our employees is really important to us, everything that we do and our mission to serve children. However, given the temporary status of our remote instruction, there are some positions that just don't fit in the needs of the district at this time. So what we've done in other cases is tried to find alternative assignments. And so if you think of paraprofessionals or instructional aides that are not attached to anything under IDEA, we've tried to find a way for them to work in a community care center or participate in some other fashion that's, you know, naturally contributing towards the operation of the system at this time. So these would just be a couple of folks who are in positions that unfortunately, they're not able to perform a role for us right now.
I see. Thank you. I think David, Travis, and then Maggie had a question. Dave Slavka?
With regards to the furlough, I know in the private sector, that gives them the option to come back when their duties are able to work and, you know, they're able to do their duties again, correct, Dave?
That's correct. And the job is still theirs. They do not lose their space.
Okay. And they can also collect unemployment because they're being released under furlough. It's not a disciplination where they would be subject to, you know, go in front of a hearing and such, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. Travis, did you have a question?
More of a comment, I guess, Helen. Thank you very much. But I think, as you described, Dr. Ryan, operationally, I would agree with the approach that you are taking. I think in all the years that I've sat on, you know, a couple of these boards, you know, either a termination or a hire goes to the board level, but anything else is operational, and the superintendent is responsible for the operations of the district is the way I've always seen it. So I would agree with your approach, that it's more informing us of what's going on within the district as opposed to looking for any kind of a vote from the board. So I would support that approach.
Thank you, Travis. Maggie, did you have something you wanted to ask?
I was just asking for clarity, and I just got it from Travis. So I, because I did not think this is something the board needed to approve. This is something that falls under your purview, right, Dr. Ryan?
I believe it does, but I want to have the open conversation with the board because none of us have been through this before.
Understood. Okay. Yeah, no, then I think it makes perfect sense.
Thank you. Bob?
I was wondering, is this one or two people? Are we talking about a half dozen? Is there a rough number there?
As of today, I believe it was only two people, Bob, but I would need to get confirmation from Dr. Campbell.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Dr. Ryan relative to this issue? So I think it's the consensus of the board, David, that we leave it in your purview. And just to, perhaps, as you mentioned at our October 6th PP and C meeting, you could inform us of what's happening there and just give us some updates. That would be great.
Thank you. What I would like to be able to do is we'll work with payroll because we'll need to submit furlough letters to those employees very shortly, within the next few days. And I can bring a full list to PP and C on October 6th, whether it's two employees or if there is another or two that I've simply forgotten. But we'll make sure that we do that on October 6th.
Thank you, David. Did you have anything else before we moved into resignations and the coaches or new hires? Was there anything else you wanted to report on?
Nothing else in terms of my report. We covered quite a bit last night, and I know we'll be covering more of it again moving forward, so.
Right.
But not in this meeting, however.
Alrighty. Are there any other questions for Dr. Ryan on anything that he talked about prior to this? Seeing none, I think we can move to the discussion, Dr. Ryan, on new hires and the coaches. I believe that Maggie had asked for some explanation on that for us, please.
Yes, thanks very much. I've sent to you, I think it was during our facilities meeting, right around the front of it, a list of the school year '21 new hires that we have to report out of Human Resources. If you recall, back in April, you provided me with the authority to offer contracts to new hires, become employees of the Cooperative School District. This is a list of those employees to whom we've offered contracts and have accepted. You will see that there are very few classroom teachers from the Cooperative School District that we needed to hire, but a lot of support staff and special education staff members. Very proud of the collection of the new employees that we do have. It wasn't the orientation that we wanted to provide for them. Thankfully, most, if not all, of our new employees have been working in a remote setting last spring, coming from other school districts as well as other states. So they had some experience working in a remote setting. However, we typically like to do a new teacher orientation. We like to introduce ourselves from the SAU office, as well as these new teachers, to each other. We weren't able to do that quite as well as we normally could, given the remote factor. We're going to continue to move around and talk with these people and kind of introduce ourselves. But I wanted to be able to share with you that these were folks that we've hired, and in all of the cases within the retirement incentive proposal, were brought in under budget. So we were able to find really high-quality employees and stay within the proposed plan under that retirement incentive proposal. And so I would submit this, and if you wish to take an action this evening, that would memorialize it. It would also confirm our decision to hire them over the summer. However, you have already taken a vote to grant that authority, so it's up to the chair on whether or not you want to move forward with action.
Well, what is your preference, David? If you prefer to have us make a motion to memorialize it, that's fine. If you don't feel it's necessary, we can just move on. What are your thoughts?
I think it is important to have a board vote because it demonstrates that public support for the employees in our system.
Certainly. All right. Are there any questions for Dr. Ryan regarding the new hires? Melissa?
I just wanted to ask, at this point in time, how we're utilizing the nurse and the librarian?
Is that, I don't mean to sound glib, Melissa, but is that germane to voting whether or not we hire these folks? Because I've already hired them. Can we then discuss after? And the only reason I ask is I can, I'm going to ask Mr. Monahan to talk about, are you talking about the high school librarian?
A high school librarian and the CMS nurse. And I don't, I don't mean it in a nasty way at all. I'm just, oh, well, actually, two CMS nurses. I don't mean it in, I mean, I mean it sincerely. Since the schools are closed, what are they doing? That's all.
Right. Oh, no, I didn't think you meant it in a nasty way whatsoever. I mean, I'm happy to ask Mr. Monahan and Ms. Wans to talk about how we're utilizing those folks, but I didn't know if that had anything to do with whether or not you were going to be voting for them or not. So, Mr. Monahan, can you talk about how we're using the high school librarian? I prefer not to use names.
Yeah, the new librarians have been jumping in to do some, you know, organization reorganization, those types of things that need to be done always. Also, he's a really experienced educator. His background is as a classroom teacher, then he became a librarian. So his interest and skill set is also in getting in and working with teachers and kids on research and things like that. So he'll be, he's already started to talk to teachers about that, and he's going to dig into that in the remote setting. So we're really excited for what he can bring to the table to kind of make that remote environment even more enriching, if you will.
And Patty, do you mind talking about your two school nurses?
Yes. Actually, all three, we have three nurses, and the nurses have been in every day. And you can find them in our foyer quite early in the morning, checking in staff as they come in and collecting the health screening sheets, and also for the students. We have at least 45 to 50 students coming in every day for their programming and services. And several of those students have complicated medical needs as well that require nursing. And so they are busy in our community care center. We hope to open Monday. It might be Tuesday or Wednesday. We're finalizing the buses, but it's important that we have nurses.
And is it fair to say, both Mike and Patty and Sharon, that your nurses are also available to your staff?
Yes. Yes, and they have been. Yes.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion at this point to memorialize the new hires that were approved by Dr. Ryan over the summer. Do we have a motion to do so? Bob? So moved, Bob?
I so moved, yes.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Kathy. All right. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions? All right then. We are good to go, Dr. Ryan, on the new hires. Thank you.
Thanks very much. The other, I'm sorry, sorry, Melissa.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. It's, I've been wanting to ask this for the past few days, actually. At one point, we had, I think, right, didn't we change the policy that the school nurses were not going to treat the staff, which, by the way, I personally think it's fine if they treat the staff. I'm in favor of it in this situation. I'm just curious if the way that we changed the wording on that policy, does it directly conflict how we're handling COVID right now? Do we need to revisit that policy, is my point?
We actually do not, because we reviewed that today, believe it or not, with Exeter Health Resources as well as our consulting physician, because that was a question that they had asked. And it's a policy... Not that one there. It's in the G section. Basically says, "The district provides student health services in order to appraise, protect, and promote student health. The school nurse will provide health care and treatment to staff." The school nurse will provide healthcare and treatment to staff, but will not be available for routine physical checkups or health maintenance." This is called the GLC and it's from our Cooperative School Board and it was approved on April 16th, 2019.
Awesome. Thank you.
One, one of the questions I asked our consulting physician was, is temper, are temperature checks, reviewing screening questionnaires and catering to any, any staff member who feels as though they may have a symptom, is that considered health maintenance? And they said, no, it's not. It's, it's treating and you're permitted to treat that we have presented.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Seeing nothing else on this particular topic, David, would you like to address the issue of coaches, please? The fall coaches?
Yes, please. Once we approved interscholastic sports for the fall semester, excuse me, yes, the fall season, I asked Coach Ball to submit to me a list of his coaches for me to bring to the board for nomination. Mr. Monahan has seen this, obviously. It made it through the PP and C. We discussed it, I think it was in September, was it September 1st when we had PMP and C? It seems, seems right, Maggie, shaking her head? And so PP and C has chosen to bring it here. I would ask at this time for the board to approve these nominations for our fall athletic season.
And as I understand it, Dr. Ryan, if there is an issue, then we would need to go into non-public to discuss if any board member had an issue with any of those nominations. Am I correct on that?
That's correct. And, and I apologize, we did not number these. So I would have to ask you to painstakingly count down to a line number if there is a specific person we wish to speak about in non-public.
I guess I would ask first, are there any board members who have any issues relative to any of the coaching nominations? And if there are none, I would entertain a motion to approve the list of fall coaches.
Helen, I would make a motion that we accept the proposed list of coaches that have been presented to us through PP and C and here through the show up board.
Thank you Travis. Do we have a second on that?
I'll second.
Thank you, Dave. Is everyone okay? I don't want to rush through this. Is everyone okay with the list? If not, I will call for a vote. All right, seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Raise your hands, please. Thank you. I'm sorry. Opposed? Abstentions? All right, that would be unanimous. Thank you, Dr. Ryan.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Alrighty. We'll move to our building administrators. Want to hear how things are going in our building, so, well, or outside of our buildings, I should say. So Mike, would you like to begin for the high school, please?
Sure. So we've completed day four of, of our remote instruction. I think it's gone, gone very well. We've had, as Dr. Ryan mentioned, we had, you know, hiccups and bumps and around technology. But I think they were, they were few. But, you know, as I was talking to Dr. Ryan and Dr. Campbell this morning, it's sort of like when the power goes out and, and you know, they only say it's a handful of people. Well, you know, if you're one of the handful, it's 100% to you. So I certainly appreciate the frustration by, you know, some parents and kids who kind of got, you know, in a stuck position. But I will say, I'm very grateful to our administrative assistants who are kind of the front lines, making the phones and causing trouble shoot for kids and parents. And Sandra Blank, Richard Pratt from Technology, Anne Hadwin, Lisa Deegan, our registrar, Pam Carr, one of our, our APs who's really good with Canvas. I think we solved a lot of problems and every day it gets a little better. And I, I'm very, very grateful to the teachers and their hard work. The kids have been great. All the teachers report that the kids have been present and engaged and we want to keep it that way. I know the parents are working hard to help their kids and I ask and appreciate their, their patience as we work through this process. But I think we got off to a, a good start. We're in a, we're in a good place and it, and it's going to get better. And, you know, the eight days of professional development that led up to it were, were outstanding. And I'm grateful to the, the board and the community for giving that to us. The work was great by the teachers and staff. We really reconnected as a learning committee, community, excuse me. And we gained some skill sets and I felt we were really ready to, to hit the ground running. So it's been a, it's been a good start. Last Wednesday, we also had a freshman orientation. We brought freshmen in in small groups, like about 10 or 12 per teacher, able to speak with the teacher and get their Chromebooks and a little packet with some information. I think that went really, really well and it was well received. And we gave out about 270 Chromebooks to the freshmen. And the folks who haven't received them yet, we're working through that process to get those in their hands. Certainly like to thank Jen Riley and Beth Caputa, staff members who kind of make this happen every year. Suzanne Bowden, Kathy Newcomb, and Marcy Dobalek, our assistant principal and charger for freshmen. They did a great job with that as well. Just one other thing in the works, we've got the in-school SAT for our seniors for, for September 23rd. Be getting some more information out about the logistics of that. We'll have it set up in a real, you know, a safe socially distanced manner. One thing that I want to emphasize, this is not for state accountability. So it's an optional test. We sent out in opt-out form to our parents if they, you know, don't, if their, their son or daughter doesn't want to do it or they don't want them to take it, that's fine. And we just need to know who's not going to take it. There's no action necessary for anybody. There's nothing for you to do. You don't have to sign up. That's all taken care of. And so we'll, we'll get more information out to everybody towards the end of the week and, and get that rolling. So again, good start and we're hoping to make it better every day.
Thank you, Mike. And I also want to thank you for your efforts in getting those SATs, making those available to those seniors. As a grandparent of a senior, I know that the kids have really been having a difficult time because of the cancellations. And while I know a lot of the colleges are waiving them, some are not. And, and for the kids to be given that experience, we do appreciate your efforts and those of your faculty. I know that's not easy to coordinate. So thank you so much. Are there any other questions or comments for Mr. Monahan? All right then. Thanks again, Mike. We'll move on to Mrs. Wans and hear what's going on with CMS. Thank you, Patty.
Sure. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My report is much like Mike's. It's really just starting with gratitude. I feel like we had a really great start to our school year. Like Mike said, we're only four days in. Just want to mention a couple of folks and that's first, the, the ladies in the front office, Linda Ray, Robin Arkell, Nancy Demers. I will tell you, the first day of, the first two days, the phone was ringing off the hook. And they really, I always say they keep our ship afloat. And they do because from some calls of just, we can't get on, what do we do? How do we access this, find that? And those three ladies just kept all the parents calm and the kids calm. And we did have some glitches with technology. I think it's to be expected. But I just have to say overall, the number of overwhelming positive emails that I received Thursday evening into Friday, into the weekend from our families. Our community is just amazing. And they just wanted to share their gratitude as well and their recognition of the teachers and the hard work that the teachers have put in to make this experience, remote learning, different from last spring, which we all knew we did it in a weekend. But they recognize the efforts. They appreciate the efforts. We're still working on the little technology glitches, but every day is stronger. I just, I need to say out loud, Ellen Sargent, honestly, that woman is absolutely amazing. I'm so indebted to her, morning, noon, and night. With Ellen, it's like effortless. I don't know how she juggles everything in the air and helps everybody all at the same time. So I'm just so blessed to work with her. And like Mike said, all of the prep work prior to the first day of school were those eight days of learning and it was really intense learning and lifting of new information and new material for staff. And I'm just so pleased with the collaborative efforts of, of all of the teachers. And what's happening now, and I feel badly because I didn't know this when I submitted my report to you, I've had teachers stopping me in the hall and I just want to say this out loud, that Jamie Seroy is a sixth grade math teacher. Apparently she's just been instrumental with just helping teachers with seesaw, that she's become one of our resident experts. And, and she's just meeting with teachers after school or throughout the day and helping them. And then I learned this morning that Sue Garnow, our Family Consumer Science teacher, she's having her own little PD session tomorrow morning where a couple of staff members are just going to, you know, sit in her classroom with her and she's going to help them with seesaw. So it is so, you know, it just makes you feel so proud and honored that our staff, they're just all about helping each other. Our PTO is so strong. This morning, every teacher found a nice little baggie with a little note of welcome back and thank you for your hard work and all these little treats in a bag. And it might seem really simple, but I don't know. When I got that treat after 2:30 in a day of orientation, I could use a Hershey kiss, you know? And it's just those little things that other people might say, what's a big deal? But it's such a big deal, you know, to go to your mailbox and find a whole bag of treats. And then it's a really great message from our PTO. So, and a huge shout out to Kim Hoteling, who is our president or co-president, I think now, but as a teacher. And Kim, I, I don't know where she finds the time in her day either because she's so giving and it's a part of just makes the school so strong and, and a part of the culture and of just who we are. But to start our school year, knowing that it was going to be a little tender at the start, I feel like everybody is just pitching in and supporting each other. I know I gave you a list of folks' names that were just so wonderful during the PD sessions. Again, colleagues helping colleagues and that's where, to me, the best work is, is when you learn from your colleagues. There's that comfort there. You can ask questions and that's what makes a strong school. So I am very indebted and grateful to all of the teachers who are just getting out there and helping each other. And then lastly, to the administrative team, Bill Mel, Lauren, Sonya, and Jen, and Anne Hadwin, and Jamie. You know, we too are just very collaborative and lean on each other. And that's what you have to do and in certain times like these. So, and of course, the board, Dr. Ryan, everyone's support, it's been very helpful and we're appreciative.
Thank you so much, Patty. And thank you to you for your leadership. And please extend the thanks of the board to everyone. I know this has not been easy for everyone, for parents, for students, for faculty. So it sounds like you, you're doing good things there to try to make this as easy as possible for everyone. Thank you. Are there any questions or comments for, for Patty? Yes, Travis?
Thank you, Helen, and thank you, Patty. I appreciate the, the comments. And this really applies to, to all the administrators, Patty, Mike, Sharon, and Michelle. I'm guessing it's the same way. But Patty, you really kind of articulated well that it's great to hear that so many of our staff are really embracing the technology that we need to use, you know, during these current times that we're in. They're really taking advantage of, you know, any training and any extra PD. And, you know, hearing that some teachers are, you know, giving their, their morning time to, to help their colleagues learn this technology. And that, you know, so many of those professionals are embracing the tools that, that we need right now. It's great to hear. So thank you very much for sharing that. And kudos to those staff members that really are stepping up to utilize the tools that we need to, to service our students the best we can in the environment we're in. So really, really appreciate that. And that goes for all the administrators and all of their staff. So, so thank you for that.
Thank you Travis. Are there any other questions or comments for Patty from the board? All right then. Thanks again, Patty. We'll move to Sharon and hear about what's going on at SST. You've been a busy lady.
Yes, this is true. So first of all, thank you to honestly everyone for helping make our start such a success. Thank you for those eight days of professional learning. They were very important for everyone. There was a different layer for us too. They were important for us to be able to get everything together to do our start. Very grateful to Exeter High School. We're a small staff. They collaborated with us, allowed us to link into some of their PD sessions, which kind of enriched our offerings even more so. So always grateful to our, our colleagues on Blue Hawk Drive. We ended with a very nice webinar with Jessica Minahan, who's the author of The Behavior Coach. She's a behaviorist, behavioral specialist. And she presented on anxiety and oppositional behaviors in students, but also for staff. Not the oppositional piece, just the anxiety. So she did have a nice message for our staff about taking care of themselves, which is something I keep trying to engrain upon them. SST teachers will work 24/7. I have difficulty getting them to shut off their phones. And, you know, I, I was in Sunday working. I went in, there was one teacher there working. I came out at seven o'clock at night and there were three people in there working. So that is my staff and they need to pace themselves. Jessica also worked on us with some racial identity anxiety as well due to what's going on in our world. So it was wonderful and it was a perfect start. And it really gave us some common language that we're already starting to draw on with each other when we're dealing with conflicts or, you know, little glitches in technology. So we opened to a little over 700 students and 90% of them are in person. And every day I get more emails about people saying, hey, I said I was going to go remote, but I really want to come in person. Is that okay? Yes, please come in person. The kids have been incredible. The kids are so grateful for the opportunity and they have been expressing that since day one. They, the second day, Adam Rosmick and I were starting to walk outside to go through the pre-screening forms. Kids were already there early and they had already lined up and they were already socially distanced without prompting. And they all had their filled out pre-health screening forms. Today, in the first session, I want to say maybe five out of 235 kids didn't have their form. But the kids who don't have the form immediately go up to our table to see Mrs. Chamberlain to say, I don't have my form. And some of them have their temperature on the, on their phone because they took it at home and they have it written down. The kids are really taking it seriously. And the parents in all six of our communities, I am so grateful. This has been a very hard process. And as someone whose first year as a principal kind of went haywire on, on March 13th, I will say that last week, I owe a very big debt of gratitude to the parents for an outpouring of support and appreciation. And one woman actually said, boy, I hope that someone is cooking you a nice dinner tonight. And if not, when this is all over, we're going to have you over for dinner. And so little does she know that, yes, she will be having me over for dinner after COVID. So we couldn't have done it without this board, without the governing board, without all of the principals in all of the six schools that come to SST. Special thanks always to Mike Monahan, who has just been a phenomenal colleague to me since I started. And, you know, the day before we open, if there's anything you need, just call me. That's Mike's mantra with us and we really appreciate it. I've been working on enrollment too. And Lisa Deegan has been incredibly gracious and helpful with me because I've only done it before on Aspen. And so Power School's been a new tool for me to use in regards to enrolling students and processing them out. Rusty Lister, I now call him the Rusty Lister, has just been phenomenal. The quality and care that has gone into SST, it's just exhilarating. And it started with the grounds and the playground and they set the little children's tables up outside with such care. All of that, we decided to move our second health science classroom into a classroom that had just been called the Furniture Graveyard. And it's already painted and it looks gorgeous. And the, the Plexiglas dividers that he found, oh my gosh, they are incredible. And the Plexiglas dividers that he found, oh my gosh, they are incredible. And it's just, it's a beautiful thing. I was at the Right Start preschool parent orientation last night because our Right Start preschoolers start on Monday, and the parents felt so comfortable and so confident in our safety protocols and procedures. And that is because of everybody involved. It has taken six villages with Exeter at the forefront for SST this year, and I'm just so phenomenally grateful to everyone. And the teachers, we're dealing with a little bit with the technology piece, especially with trying to balance kids in class and kids on Zoom, but we're working through some of those things. And SST teachers, they are the platinum standard. They are incredible, and I am so grateful and so inspired by them every day, and I continue to be. And Adam Rosmick has been unbelievably phenomenal. He has completely redone the traffic pattern and the busing patterns so that we can get kids in and out without having clusters. There's one passing in one hallway when we're dismissing kids and you see like one kid walking down that lone hallway. So what he has done has really made us all that much more safer. And I know I'm forgetting someone, but, and lastly, for those of you that were here last year, you remember a special ELO with blue strawberries. Well, that young lady is a senior, and even though she finished her two years at SST, she's a senior at Exeter High School. So she's going to finish the blue strawberry as an ELO. And I'm just so excited because it's such a great thing. So we may still have our blue strawberries. So thank you, everyone, and anybody that I forgot, so appreciative of all the support.
Thank you so much, Sharon, and thank you too for your leadership. We appreciate it. And please, as I said with the other building administrators, please extend our thanks to your faculty and your staff. It's truly appreciated. David, do you have a question?
No, it's more of a response. Thank you so much, Sharon, with regards to making it happen with the in-person, especially SST, and now going forward with the daycare of the younger kids. I really appreciate, you know, all the effort and I love hearing the success, you know, of it being in person. So thank you again for that.
And it was Tricia Daly, I forgot to support. She's been phenomenal on getting the busing done. So Tricia Daly, goddess.
I hear the music playing, Sharon. I can hear the music. Time to get off the stage now.
Thank you, Sharon. Are there any other questions or comments for Sharon? Melissa?
I just wanted to say quick, Sharon, you've been so, David did it, but you've been so busy thanking everybody else. We want to thank you as well. So you are, you're impacting children from six different towns, like Dave Sluska said, now the preschool. I'm super proud of the students that are being responsible, and it makes me think of graduation and Mike Monahan. I know they're coming from different towns, but you get credit for these kids being so mature. Sharon, I've been hearing people just sing your praises for months now, just long before this, and people say, where did she come from? And I laugh, you know, and I'll say, well, David found her, David Ryan found her. So credit to you too, David. But Sharon, just know everyone appreciates you. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. All right, we have saved, last but not least, from our building administrators, Michelle Bodo, welcome, Michelle. We know you have a few wonderful things to share with us this evening, and we welcome you to our family.
Well, thank you, Helen. Thanks for inviting me tonight. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you about what's happening in Exeter Adult Ed. And as for many years, Exeter Adult Education will continue to offer adult basic education, HICEP prep, ESL, and the Adult High School Diploma Program. So those are all running. Registrations for our programs, they did start yesterday, Monday, September 14th, and we're continuing to work as an open enrollment center to assist all learners in their educational pathway for success. So that just started yesterday, so I'm looking forward to, hopefully, everybody else is going through all the hoops for us and we'll have smooth sailing the next couple of weeks. This summer, just to share with you, we did hold some HICEP testing, which enabled a small group of students actually to move forward in their educational careers. And just so you're aware that we were actually one of the few centers during the summer that actually, in the state of New Hampshire, that conducted those HICEP testings. So we were really proud to be able to do that this summer when not a lot of that stuff was going on. And kudos to Mike in regards to the SATs too. We're all just trying to navigate this whole COVID. These are great things that we're doing for kids and for adult learners. As a center, just to give you guys a heads up, we are using a hybrid instructional model, which we designed to meet the needs of our students and our staff. And based on our community need right now, we have added an additional HICEP prep class specifically for high school students that have alternative learning plans, because as we know, students, the HICEP, the model that's being conducted right now doesn't work for all learners. So we're actually gonna be offering an additional class to be able to support increased enrollment. And to actually share some perspective on alternative learning plans with you tonight, I'm gonna introduce to you a parent that, I met her son this summer. He took our HICEP prep program. He took the exams on July 15th and July 22nd. He was a student at the high school and he was on an alt plan. And this parent really, when I reached out to her, she's like, you know what, I really, I would love to share my story, because I feel like stories and narratives are really important, because we all can come here as building administrators and share data with you, but I feel it's really important to hear those personal stories. And she was welcome, she said, I can do it. And so she's here tonight. David, if you can, if you let her in, she's actually in the participants, her name is Emily, and her son did actually graduate with his high school completion on July 22nd this summer.
And Emily is with us.
Hi, Emily.
Hi, Emily.
Emily, you're muted in the bottom left-hand corner, so you just need to hit unmute.
We good now?
Good.
Okay.
Welcome, Emily.
Thank you. I wrote something down so that I won't talk forever. So my son is the first love of my life. He's brilliant and intense, loving and sensitive. As a stay-at-home mom for his whole life, we've spent a lot of time together and we're very close. When he was four years old, he was given a 400-page encyclopedia about superheroes, and he memorized all the facts about each one. In kindergarten, I got a phone call from his teachers telling me he had blown them all away, done complicated long division problems in his head, and he was reading at a fifth-grade level. Testing revealed he had a very high IQ. Learning came easy to him, though as he grew older, school did not. During middle school, he was diagnosed with ADHD and anxiety. Both of those things caused him to struggle with organization and getting work in on time. We tried OT and supplements, essential oils and counseling, but none of it really made a difference. During freshman year of high school, he was diagnosed with major depressive disorder and generalized anxiety disorder as well as ADHD. His grades were good, but he was not okay. We began seeing his psychiatrist and a new counselor and worked hard to get medication and resources that would help him. Freshman year ended okay, but sophomore year did not. My son became more and more depressed, and he was hospitalized for the first time that winter. He began missing a lot of school and fell behind. Missing assignments and stress led to further anxiety and more missed days. He barely completed his sophomore year. His diagnoses were amended during that first hospitalization, and over the next few months, various medications were tried and adjusted. There were also several more hospitalizations. We hired tutors, we contemplated private school. There was no limit to what we were willing to do to help him, but all of it was too much for him. We were making things worse by trying to push him forward when he simply wasn't healthy enough. By the middle of my son's junior year, he was behind by a whole bunch of credits and his graduation prospects weren't good. We discussed the possibility of finishing high school through the night school program, but we all felt that might be very stressful, as he'd need to take a lot of classes both at night and during the day in order to have enough credits for an on-time graduation. The decision was made that he would take the HICEP to finish high school. I cried the day that choice was made. This was not my dream. He was supposed to go to college right after high school. He was supposed to walk at graduation with his class. But dreams can evolve and change. The night he finished the HICEP and passed with flying colors, I cried tears of happiness.
I think we lost her.
Did we lose her?
Yeah, we lost her audio.
Emily, we lost you.
We can see you, but we can't hear you, Emily.
Oh, no, where did I lose you? A while ago.
After he took the HICEP and passed it with flying colors.
Okay. I cried tears of happiness, joy and relief, and he was proud. That accomplishment was not small, it was huge. For a kid who had struggled for several years, it was a victory, and I am so, so grateful he had that opportunity. A couple of months after taking the HICEP, my son is doing very well. He has a job that he enjoys, and he plans to study psychology at Great Bay next semester. Without the opportunity to test out of high school, we wouldn't be where we are today. I want to thank the Exeter Cooperative School District and School Board for your continued support of programs like the Exeter Adult Education that help all learners reach their potential. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. What an inspiring story, and please congratulate your son on behalf of the school board. Let's give him a round of applause.
I will. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
That's great. Thank you.
Emily, I want to thank you for doing this, because it's not always easy to come into a forum like this to share that story, but stories are so impactful. And I just wanted to tell the school board here, I know my predecessor, Leslie Haslam, has been working with me over the past month. She's still kind of mentoring me along the way, and she has shared with me steadfast that you all here at the Exeter Regional Cooperative School Board have supported adult ed for many, many years. And I just want you to know that I know that in these financially tough times, I get it, like I get it, that some of these alternative pathways are some of the first things that are cut. But it's so important to realize that you've got such a strong structure here in our region with Exeter High School and SST being just the catalyst for like such great career opportunities for students. And now we have like Exeter Adult Ed, we have all these pathways for adult learners and high school learners and for all learners to come back and to do great things. So I just want to say thank you, and I really look forward to working with the school board in our district. So, and thank you, Emily.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily.
Thanks, Emily.
And thank you, Michelle, so much. We appreciate it. We look forward to working with you, Michelle, this year. And I did want to make one comment that I should have made earlier when Dr. Ryan was delivering his superintendent's report, and it is somewhat related. I wanted to congratulate you, David, on the convocation, the virtual convocation. I don't know if many of you had an opportunity to see that. It is on the SAU website. It was very unique. The kids did a wonderful job, as did you, David. Thank you. But I also wanted to comment, there were several awards that were given to some of our faculty, and I was thrilled to see that the Eustace Award this year was given to Leslie Haslam. And so well deserved, so well deserved. So I just wanted to mention that for those of you who might not have been aware of that. So thank you again, Michelle, and we wish you all of the very best in your new position this year. Keep us posted.
Thanks, Walter.
All right. Are there any questions for Michelle? I should do that before I move on to Molly. All right then, we'll move to Molly O'Keefe, who's gonna deliver our financial report. Molly?
So first, I'll start with last year. So how we finished the 1920 school year, we put in your board pack of the projected unreserved fund balance of $2,123,436. That is almost exactly to what we reported on August 17th, the last time we met. The only difference is of an increase of expense of $11,139, and that's due to an SRO cost we did not have in the previous financial when we sent that to you. So that's the only difference, and that is the number that's going to appear on your DOE 25-year-end reporting, which we're almost done with. And when we do finish that, because we're in the COVID environment, I will send that out via email, and just like the last time where I asked you to sign and back to me, or feel free to swing by the SAU office and say hello, we'll have a hard copy there as well for you to sign. But when you do get that from us via email, if you could either sign and scan it back to me or swing by and sign, that would be fantastic.
Helen, I'm sorry, Molly, can I just interrupt while the memory is fresh regarding the SRO? I just want to explain the quarter three payment that we made is because we began the quarter, and the SRO had started within the building. We paid the invoice for quarter three to the Exeter Police Department, but we've been relieved of quarter four because we're not having services of the SRO. So we're not paying for the SRO to serve in quarter four. And presently, we do not have a plan for an SRO in the next, in this school year right now. So any incident that occurs at any of our schools, it's a call to the police department. I just wanted to make sure that we were clear on that. I assumed there would be a question relative to if we're not having SRO services, why would we be paying? And I wanted to get ahead of that. So thanks, Molly.
Thanks, David.
And then we also included a current year financial. Now, the current year financial does have the actual budget and the actuals to date. However, the encumbrances, we are still working to clean those up. So I will say those are a work in progress, and we've encumbered as much as we know to date. We typically don't include the current year until October, so we did include it early this year just because of the financial situation that we're in with COVID. We wanted you to have a copy of it. So did anybody have any questions on either how we finished last year or what we're looking like this year?
Travis?
Thank you, Helen, thank you, Molly. And just one thing, we touched on during the finance committee meeting earlier this evening, but the one line item on the current financial summary for the current fiscal year is the line item at the very bottom with regards to support for the charter school. So we had asked Molly and Dr. Ryan, I would guess, to ask and get confirmation from you, because one of the things that we were pretty clear about, and we'll certainly defer to the board on this, was that, you know, our support of the charter school came with expectations that they would put in significant efforts to try and improve their financial situation and maintain some fairly solid lines of communication with Dr. Ryan and with Molly in terms of what efforts were being made there. When we discussed this, creating this current budget, when we were going through this process last year, some of the charter school board members came to us and said we should be ashamed with how we were approaching this and things of that nature. And I want to make sure and be clear in that this is on the record, that I'm asking if we've had any improvement in that relationship and that they be put on record, that if that has not improved, when we go to create our next budget, that $280,000 line item is going to warrant some fairly significant discussion, in my opinion, anyway. But Dr. Ryan, do you have any comments in terms of any improvement we've seen relative to the efforts to improve the financial situation for the charter school?
I can't say that there has been a lot of activity between the charter school and our administration. We had started to meet shortly after the meeting to, when the funding was reinstated, originally I believe it was in December. And we had a meeting in January, and then we had a conflict in February, and then we were on COVID in March. And so to be fair, there wasn't much communication with anybody between March and the end of the school year. I reached out to Mr. Stackhouse in late July, early October to ascertain his planning. We had a few email communications where he was describing some of his plans that had shifted a little bit, particularly after we moved to a full remote opening. He was also contemplating a full remote opening. They had students here yesterday, they did not have students here today with the charter school. As far as the finances, I'm not certain there's been much more headway in that either. I'll leave that to Molly to describe.
No, and we talked about in the finance committee, I've not had any conversations with the charter school regarding their financial position.
If I could make a recommendation, I think at this point, as we go into the new budget year for next year, I think it would be important for us to perhaps connect with their board of directors, because that was a request that was made by them last year, because they felt that they were kind of in the dark on a lot of the things that had not happened. I don't know how accurate that is, but I concur with Travis that we need to make But I concur with Travis that we need to make sure that we're all on the same page with regard to what the expectations are. And that would involve clearly a meeting with them as well, as well as the administration at the charter school.
Helen, if I could just follow up, and I know Kathy had a question there as well. But, and again, just, just to be clear, I'm very supportive of the mission of the charter school. And I would like to continue to support it, as I think this entire board would. I don't speak for the board, but I think we had some fairly in-depth discussions last year about this. I will only speak for myself. But, you know, we, I want to see effort being made to improve their financial situation. I'm more than happy to continue to support them in some fashion because they provide a very valuable service to some of our students. As Michelle was talking, you know, a few moments ago about extra adult ed, you know, the charter school provides another avenue for some students where that makes sense. So it's not that I don't want to support them. But I think we were pretty clear that we should not be subsidizing them with no effort being made or little effort, maybe as a more fair way to put it, to improve their situation. And we were called out as sort of cutting, you know, the funding out from underneath them, which I do not think was the case at all. So I wanted to make sure this was on the record that, you know, we've had some discussions about this. And Helen, to your point, I really feel it's Peter's obligation to have their board communicate with us. It's not up to Dr. Ryan to be chasing them around or Molly to be chasing them around. We were very clear in our expectations. And I think that should be up to Peter and his board to be reaching out to us to share what's been happening as opposed to the other way around. But that's just, just my thoughts, and Kathy didn't mean to jump in front of you there.
It's okay. That's okay. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, Kathy, you go ahead. You go ahead, Kath.
I have a question that we brought up at the last meeting that we were in, just before this, the finance meeting. Why is it that the charter school doesn't have representation at our meeting? I mean, everybody else does. Why aren't they here? And I, it never even dawned on me until we were talking about it at the meeting that it's weird that they're not presenting to us and coming to us as we are. We do help them, and they're a part of our campus. Wouldn't it make sense to have them come to the meeting?
I think that, that they've been invited. I know that in the past, as a matter of fact, that budget meeting in December, it was extended to them. And when we met in January, we extended to them as well to provide quarterly updates to this board on performance and financial performance. To have a standing seat at the table with our four school administrators is not something that I would support right now, Kathy. I know they're members of the campus community, but they're not members of the SAU 16 community per se. So I would, I would kind of draw the line there. Otherwise, we'd be inviting music and arts, Tai Chi, and YMCA to also have a seat at the table.
But we.
But I think that a quarterly presentation is, has been extended to their charter school. And we still welcome that at this level.
But we help, we supply a lot of, not a lot, but we do supply some income for their school. So, I mean, I guess we could technically say SST is separate, and so is adult ed. But yet, they're not. So, and I feel like the same thing with.
But Kathy, it's a different entity, Kathy, with regard to the charter school.
I totally get that. I totally get that.
In all honesty, I have to concur with David on this. We have invited them in the past to come and speak to our curriculum committee to share some of the programs that they are providing for the youngsters in our SAU who go there. And I have absolutely no problem with their continuing to do that. I also have no problem with the idea of having them do a quarterly report for us. But I would not be comfortable having them represented at every monthly board meeting for the reasons I've just mentioned. We can talk about that at another time. I think we're kind of, I don't disagree with what you're saying. I understand what you're saying. But because we have so many other agenda items tonight, I think I'd like to save that perhaps for a committee meeting to talk about it, if you wouldn't mind. But I, but we're hearing what, what you're, you're saying here. Thank you.
Helen, may I just add a point to something Neil said that's kind of hanging out there? Is that my position as the superintendent is that we have three secondary schools and an adult education school within the cooperative school district, all four of which are governed by this board and supervised by this superintendent's office. Neither of those entities have any supervisory governance responsibilities over Great Bay Charter School. So even though SST and adult education operate in a sort of non-traditional format, one being a career and technical education school and the other being an adult education school that provides alternative pathways to high school graduation, they do fall under the governance of the Exeter Region Cooperative School Board. So that's just the part that I wanted to help, help you understand, Kathy, is that that's really the main difference between our four schools and the cooperative and then Great Bay Charter School.
I do understand that because I was there from the inception of it. And I was on the board from the inception of it. And we, and I know that is a separate entity. I get that and I understand that. But I also know that we, as a district, supported them with teachers and we supported them with a lot of things from the beginning, as well as financial support. So I just feel like there's, I guess there's a fine line that I'm seeing there. And I just wish that it was different. So I would like to bring this up again at another meeting, but I don't want to take more time in this meeting.
Thank you, Kathy. And, and I think what, here's what my recommendation would be to address Travis's concern. I would ask perhaps that as we get to the budgeting, go through the budgeting process, I would ask David to extend an invitation to Peter and to their board members to, at some point during that process, meet with us or the committee that's, that's creating the budget to give us some feedback. Because I think we need to, if they're not going to take the initiative, at least we can extend that invitation to them. And if they choose not to do so, which I don't think will happen, then at least we will have done so. And they can't say later on that we didn't do what we should have done as far as communication. So that's my recommendation on that.
Will do. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Molly, did you have anything else? Or did anybody else have any questions for Molly on the financial report?
I do have two other items just to talk about quickly. But if anyone else had any questions on how we finished last year or where we stand this year, I'd be happy to address those first.
Doesn't look like it, Molly, so you can keep going. Thank you.
So the next item is a bit of good news for us. So health trusts due to excess reserves will be receiving a reimbursement. Now, we don't know the exact amount at this point in time. But based off of the prelim, prelim numbers that they provided us and the splits, because when they reimburse us, part has to go to the employee and part has to go to the employer. We were estimating about a $272,000 return to us, which would be unanticipated revenue for us in the current year. So again, you can't spend it because it's unanticipated revenue. And these are projected numbers at this point in time. But just wanted to give you that bit of good news that we'll see in the middle of October, hopefully. And then as we enter the budget setting season, the, the, we received notification from New Hampshire Retirement System that they're increasing the employer contribution percentages. So I did send, well, David sent it and I sent it to the finance committee because it was a request coming out of the joint board, the report from New Hampshire Retirement detailing those percentages. So Michelle and I did put the old percentage in the new percentage. We don't know the exact impact for the cooperative at this time on next year's budget because we haven't rolled over payroll in the current system. We have to wait till all the hiring is done, and it takes a bit of time to do that. But to put it in perspective, when looking at the SAU budget, it was a $44,500 increase at the SAU. So again, we don't know the impact on the cooperative, but wanted to give you that heads up that we'll be seeing that down the pipeline in the budget setting process.
Thank you, Molly. Are there any other questions for Molly on anything that she's presented thus far? Alrighty. Thank you so much, Molly. We appreciate it. We'll be coming back to you in a few minutes when we talk, talk about finance. For the chair's report, I just have, have a couple of items. I wanted to kind of piggyback on something that Dr. Ryan had said earlier. And it deals primarily with, I want to thank the community. I want to thank the parents who have been so positive with us through this horrific time that we are going through. We have received numerous emails from parents as we approached the opening. And I want to emphasize the fact that even those parents who disagreed with the decision to go remote, most of those parents have been very respectful of us and have shared their concerns, but at the same time showed restraint in terms of, you know, a lot of anger and so forth. And we appreciate that, you know. Unfortunately, that's not the case in all cases. But I, I did want to make sure that parents understood that we are in the process of responding to some of those messages that have come in. We've received many, and as you can well imagine, it takes time to get back to everyone. But we thank you for your patience and we thank you for your support. And we thank your kids for doing what they need to do to make this work. And we, we pray sincerely as a board, I know I speak for this board, that we are hopeful to get our youngsters back in person. And we will follow the guidelines that we've been given, and we will continue to do so. And I also want to thank our SAU administrators and our building administrators for all that you have done to make this work, to make this happen thus far. The other item that is on the agenda, and we can hold off on this, Molly, if you want, with regard to a selection of representatives from this board. Do you want to wait on that until we get to the financial committee? Or would you mind if I did that right now?
Nope, that's fine because honestly, I already gave the entire financial committee report.
You did. Okay, thank you. As you may know, last year when we were working on the budget, you know, history had up until the last year or two, the board was really, to a large extent, not involved with the, the budget creation other than our having a representative on the budget advisory committee. Melissa Litchfield is, has kindly consented to continue in that role for this coming year. But last year, we did have a work session, which was very productive when we were planning the budget for this year. And we are planning on doing that again, as you can tell from the list of meetings that we've had. Dr. Ryan had suggested, and I concur with him, that we should have two board members who could serve in sort of an advisory capacity when the budget is being created. This is prior, I believe, David, if I'm correct on this, before it even gets to the level of the budget advisory committee to be involved at its inception. I have volunteered to be one of those two. But if there are two other board members who have a burning desire to do so, I would be, you know, happy to step aside and allow for that. If, if you're not prepared tonight to volunteer for this, and maybe Dr. Ryan could give us a little bit of background about what the expectations would be. If you could maybe get back to me before the end of the week to let me know if you would be interested, we can go from there.
Sure. Helen, this is an opportunity for us in the SAU, the schools and the board to work collaboratively to develop a budget so that a lot of the questions that would typically be asked at the budget advisory committee can be answered, as well as improve the communication between the budget development process and the board itself. As we know, there were some surprises last year, not intentionally, but certainly through some missteps and miscommunication on my part. And that's something that I want to correct this year. I want to ensure that we have a safe, sound process for budgeting. So it's as transparent as possible. And I know, I think transparent is getting overused. But I think in our time right now, it's, it's the only way that we're able to communicate with our public and gain that trust. So this is a chance for a couple of our board members to, to be a part of the development process from an advisory standpoint, naturally supporting the, asking probing questions, you know, really digging down to some of the wants and the needs, and, and then allowing us to. Committee with the board being fully informed by those two board members, as well as myself and Molly. I think it's a great opportunity for us to really do some good work around our finances and maybe change the course of how we budget in the cooperative to become a bit more efficient, but absolutely opening up the lines of communication so more people are involved in what we're doing.
Thank you, David. Paul, did you have something you wanted to add?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I'd be glad to volunteer to be a board representative as, as part of this budgeting process. It's something that I certainly see a lot of importance in and would be happy to volunteer my time to do that.
Thank you, Paul. I appreciate that. We all do. Anybody else have any questions or concerns relative to that? Why don't we leave it then, at this point in time, Paul and I will volunteer to serve. However, if somebody else would like to do so, if you could let me know perhaps by Friday of this week, and then I could give Molly the names of those folks who would most definitely be serving on that committee. Melissa?
I'm sorry, I was on mute. I would like to respectfully ask that I be one of the two simply because I did sign up for it last March, and I think I've served the board very well in that position.
Melissa, I appreciate that, and you already are on the budget advisory committee. We're looking for two folks in addition to yourself so that we can have at least three people serving to help with the preparation of the budget. But you and I could talk about that if you'd like later on. I have no problem with discussing that with you. But we're looking for two in addition to the BAC.
Okay, no, I appreciate that, and I apologize, I misunderstood.
No, 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 not at all, not at all. You are definitely our BAC rep. Lucky you. Thank you. Okay, thanks, Melissa. All right. Yes, David? Yes, sir?
Question, because, because I'm on the teacher's contract committee also. When is this, what's the timeline for this? I mean, I don't want it to be concurrent with that.
Sure, sure.
Do we know when that'll, that'll happen?
Molly, David, could you answer David's question?
Sure. Molly and I haven't talked about the dates to get together. We have some organization work to do with principals. So, you know, when's our first BAC meeting, Molly? It's coming up in late October, mid to late October?
Um, I sent you the email today with the proposed dates.
Oh, that email? That one?
Yeah, sorry. I forget if it was, we switched it to Thursdays.
Yeah, so we, we have some organization to do around that day. I don't think it's going to be more than two or three meetings. Three would be a lot, I think.
All right. I mean, I'll be honest, I just don't want to, like you said, be in too many meetings, especially the teacher contract one. And, you know, I don't want it to be spread too thin. So I'll, I'll put my name in for, along with Paul.
Okay. I think the last couple of years, we've had. We've gone through the budgeting process with this for the past couple of years. And the kind of the format that we've been, we've been doing where they brought their initial budget, we've worked through it. They've reworked it, they've returned, we've worked through it. And if there was a third revision, we would do that. But that's typically the, the work that's, that's happened.
Thanks, David. Why don't I get back to you and Paul then before the end of the week? And I'll touch base with David and Molly as well. Appreciate it. Thank you. All right, that's all I have for Chair's Report. At this point, normally, we have our administrators if they need to go. I know you've got busy days ahead of you and early calling cards. So we're going to move to committee reports. But if any of our building administrators or other administrators feel that they would like to leave us, we thank you and feel free to stay if you want to as well. Okay? Thank you so much. Alrighty. Okay, so our first committee report is from Maggie on PPNC.
Hey, thanks, Helen. So part of our meeting was spent reviewing the, the additional personnel and the coaching list that we reviewed earlier at this meeting. And then the other big item was, we had Matt Cookson from the Cookson Communications that came and met with the committee to update us on their work and the progress on the communication plan. So he just spoke to us a little bit about his firm, how it's been in business for over 10 years, it's based in Manchester, and that they specialize in public relations, content creation, design and branding, and digital services. So he kind of went through that a little bit with us. And one of the things he talked about is their approach, which includes building connections that create better opportunities to be seen by target audiences, which is obviously an area that was of interest to us. They've toured all our. our schools, and they're deep into creating a plan that hopefully works for us, including opportunities to expand our reach, and developing channels of communication. And that word again, Dr. Ryan, transparency. I was pretty impressed. I know they've been working behind the scenes a lot with Dr. Ryan, and they'll ultimately provide him and the board, once completed a draft plan, and then the board will have an opportunity to provide some feedback. I think that's just a quick rundown of what happened at the meeting. I think that, I thought he said, Dr. Ryan, correct me if I'm wrong, that they expect this to take about three months, but I know that they're already doing things now with you. Is that correct?
That's correct, yeah. We have a draft plan, and our senior leadership team is reviewing it the next day or two. They have been since last Wednesday. We worked through it in our senior leadership team. We're looking for the feedback on the plan, particularly the schedule or the calendar of what events, what are the items that we really want to publicize, all the good things that are happening in our school. So we should have a final plan for the board much sooner than those three months. I think it was three weeks, Maggie.
Oh, thank you. I knew it was three something.
And what, the reason that I felt confident with this group and was really glad that they were able to share with PP and C was, they made me feel as though they were going to be a partner in our work, that we weren't just a client, that they were providing a service for it. They come to every Wednesday Senior Leadership Team meeting. They have attended meetings in the evening, our board meetings. They attended the presentations for professional development when we were presenting our return to school plans, and they stayed the entire day. They just toured CMS today. They're going to be doing a lot of publicity around the renovation project regarding the grant that Patty and Jacob Goodwin just got for the Diversity Equity Inclusion and Justice Program that they're working on at the school convocation. So there's the media regarding the award winner Celestie will get some more ink, like she needs it for her head. But it's really helpful to have them, because they're practicing their writing style to match or mimic mine, so that it still goes out in my voice, and I still have final say on the... So there's going to be information that's available that people can subscribe to that are not part of the SAU 16 community. This is going to be really dedicated to reaching those 80% of our community members who don't have children in our schools. We have a lot of work to do in East Kingston, we have a lot of work to do in Brentwood. We know that we have a lot of families and, or a lot of people who live in Exeter who are really interested in learning more about what's happening. So those were the reasons we had Cooks in command. I'm glad to hear, Maggie, that you were impressed by them. We're impressed by their work so far and their teamwork and the way they've partnered. They feel like one of the team now. And I think it was a really smart expenditure by this board for relatively low cost.
Yeah, that partnership came across in the meeting with them. I felt like there was a genuine interest in it being a partnership, and that the plan was going to be a fluid document. I like that as well, that it's not going to be this stagnant document that they're going to make and it's going to sit on a shelf, but that'll be a fluid document, and that they're working so closely with Dr. Ryan and the team to build a plan that's right for us. So I was very impressed, and I'm looking forward to seeing the plan. So, Ellen, and that was it for us, Helen.
Thanks, Maggie. Appreciate it. Are there any questions or comments for Maggie? All right, then, seeing none, we'll move to our Curriculum and Philosophy Committee. And Kim Meyer, if you would present your report for us, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you, Helen. We were fortunate enough to have two demonstrations during the Curriculum and Philosophy meeting. Mr. Andruski gave us a demo of Seesaw, and actually, we were really lucky to have a couple of our teachers there presenting. Neil Levis was there, and he was giving us a demonstration of the Canvas platform. And, or maybe I flipped them, maybe he was doing Seesaw. And then Mark Toby was giving us the Canvas demonstration. Regardless, I think what was important, an important takeaway, I mean, it was really a visual, an evening to have a visual presentation and actually see the software and how these platforms work, which I know I appreciated. But what's really important is that the school district has listened to really provide one platform in one place as a home base and anchor for students, so that there isn't confusion around where students are going to access their work. So that was really impressive. But so that's basically a quick, brief overview. But I do want to thank the teachers who were there, Mr. Andruski and Anne Hadwin also, who were part of demonstrating. So I don't know if any of our other members who were there have comments to share.
Just to say that I was most impressed with it and with their expertise and the fact that the teachers are taking part for the most part in the training on this, was echoed by Travis earlier. So thank you, Kim. Did anybody else have any comments that they wanted to add? Bob? I think you're muted, Bob.
Just the comment that if a family has two or three children in the school system, there's one consistent platform being used, so that, especially at the elementary, that is, so that parents don't have to switch back and forth. It's designed to be easier for them.
Right. Thank you, Bob. Any other comments, Travis?
Just briefly, and I think other people have said something similar, but I did sit in just for a few minutes to try to see some of those presentations, and really, really impressed with those two educators and their depth and breadth of knowledge with those tools, and really just their enthusiasm to use them, and not only to use them, but to teach others how to use them. Really impressed with both those two individuals who took the time to demonstrate that one evening, at least the portion that I could see. So thank you to both of them. Really, really impressive.
Thank you, Travis.
Helen, Kimberly, I'll just add that I thought it was interesting, because one of those instructors, one of our teachers, was a newer user to the platform and seemed to have demonstrated, you know, really good mastery of it in such a quick period of time. So I think that was really telling and helpful to see that, yes, it's new technology for some of our teachers, but they're able to really drill down and pick it up. And, you know, again, the district provided training during the, I was going to say preseason for school.
You're in coaching mode, Kim.
Yeah, it's just because it's late. But anyway, for during professional development days. So I think that was a nice takeaway, that, yes, there's a learning curve, but people were able to pick this up and move forward with it.
Thank you, Kim. Any other questions or comments for Kim? Thanks, Kim, we appreciate it. Moving on to facilities, Mr. Bauer?
Thank you, Helen. So we had a good meeting tonight, four agenda meetings, agenda items, I should say, that we touched on. The first related to the ionization equipment that's been ordered, and then other COVID-related equipment. Mr. Westmoreland and Mr. Lister gave us a great update regarding that ionization equipment. All of the equipment that we need, you know, across the whole SAU has been ordered and has been shipped. They've been busy with installations focusing on a couple of our elementary schools and developmental preschool installations. Actually, plan to start at SST tomorrow, which is fantastic. For the middle school and the high school, those installations are scheduled to be a bit later in the process, reason being that those schools are best equipped to handle 100% exchange of outside air at this point. With that being said, the plan is still to get those installations completed in October, you know, depending on other projects that may arise. We're hoping as soon as October 10th, but certainly in the month of October, which is great news. We also now have 12 electrocetic cleaners across the SAU with three more on order. Mr. Lister informs us that every school in the SAU has at least one at this point. Those are on loan, they're owned by the co-op. To the extent that elementary schools have them, they are on loan, but they do have them in their possession for use, which is fantastic. Mr. Lister indicated that we do have all the PPE that we need in our possession, which is fantastic. And we also confirmed that all costs associated with this equipment that we've needed to order and the installation thereof is being properly handled within the budgets of the specific district that's using them. In other words, if it's for a co-op school, it's coming under our budget. If it's for an elementary school, it's coming under that elementary school's budget. Our second agenda item was the CMS renewal project. The two most important questions we ask every time of Mr. Wendell's were both answered happily. Yes, we are still on budget. Yes, we are still on schedule. The, all the structural steel and columns are up incomplete. Paving of the new perimeter road that goes back behind the building has been, is taking shape. A new traffic pattern is established. It sounds that we're going to be able to begin with demolition of the current cafeteria relatively soon, which is good news. It's sooner than expected. One of the topics of discussion around that was the committee wanting to ensure that proceeding with that demolition is not going to adversely impact potential for any in-person return, you know, as that becomes a possibility. And Dr. Ryan assured us that that would not be an obstacle for an in-person return to our contingency plans in place. So it's great that that's moving forward and keeps us on schedule, and, you know, fingers crossed, maybe we can get just, you know, a little bit ahead of schedule. But obviously, being on schedule and on budget is great news there and that's proceeding. Last two items, trying to be quick and thorough at the same time. On the EHS renovation project that we've talked about, which again is specific to area where there's lockers that are not utilized by the students, and renovating that space to provide some much-needed conference room space and additional areas where educational services can be delivered. We've decided to hold off on that project for now, just finding it to be the fiscally sound, responsible decision to make at this point. And very thankful to Principal Monahan for his understanding and willingness to have this project be a little bit further delayed, given the uncertain period we find ourselves in. The board members will recall the $500,000 that we had set aside from last year's budget to go towards this project. And the intent of that is to continue to hold that in reserve, to use at the end of this current fiscal year that we're in to begin this project. But at the same time, by doing that, those funds remain available for any unanticipated costs that may come up. So assuming that those funds are still available at the end of the fiscal year, that would go as intended to begin this project. And then additional costs that are needed to complete it would either be included in the next fiscal year's budget, or there's potential to use some facilities maintenance funds as well. So, you know, that's a decision we can make as we move along in the process. But that's where that is. And then the last topic we discussed was use of our facilities by outside groups during this period of remote learning. And obviously, you know, to the extent we can allow outside groups to use our facilities, it's going to depend upon local conditions, you know, as we are still in this pandemic period. Really, what we discussed was wanting to ensure that to the extent we can allow our facilities to be used, we really want to prioritize use by groups and teams that are comprised of SAU 16 students across all the grade levels. You know, again, the importance of giving our SAU students a chance to have that in-person experience, in-person social opportunities. So we do want to prioritize, you know, to the extent anyone can use our facilities, SAU 16 student groups, the groups that include students from the SAU 16 communities are going to be the ones that get the priority. So that's all that we discussed tonight. Happy to take any questions if anyone has any.
Thank you, Paul. Are there any questions for Paul? We also have Dan Westmoreland and Rusty still here. Any questions from the board? Melissa?
Hi, thank you. So my question is regarding the EHS renovation that was discussed. I thought that $500,000 was taken out of the 1920 unreserved fund balance. And unless I misunderstood, it sounds as though we still have that $500,000 right now sitting someplace. Is that correct?
You mean the 2020, Melissa?
My understanding was we
Yes.
we utilized some of the unassigned fund balance to purchase an FY21 item. I don't know if it was paving or whatever, it was earmarked for, in order to free up the $500,000 in this year's budget for that. So if we're wrong in that, we're going to have to go back into our minutes and double check where that came from.
I think we should double check, because I thought the paving was $250,000.
Yeah, the paving was $250,000, and I'd have to double check to see, but anything that we set aside to do that, that EHS project with the lockers, that, I'd have to double check the minutes to determine, because I know I had sent out after that last meeting what was decided. But if anything was decided to be spent on that, the money would have to go towards that, because that was accrued to back to last year. And if we choose not to do that project, or not to do that full project, any money that's not spent that was accrued back to last year will then affect the fund balance at the end of this year. It wouldn't be able to be spent on other items, though.
Okay. Thank you, Molly.
Thank you, Melissa. Any other questions for Paul or comments? All right. Thank you so much, Paul. Melissa, were you on for financial? If there's anything additional on finance for us?
So I'm going to thank Molly, because she covered it all. And then you can all thank me, because she covered it all. We're going to get out of here faster tonight. How's that?
I like your style. Thanks, Melissa. All right. Great. All right. With regard to any old business, the only correction that I needed to make, and I think we pretty much announced this, but not to the entire board, when we set up the schedule of meetings, I inadvertently scheduled a PP and C and curriculum meeting for Tuesday, November 3rd. That is election night. And we have decided that we're going to not hold a meeting that night, but we will leave November 10th in abeyance in the event that we need to meet for any reason for either of those two committees. But as of now, November 3rd will not be, you can all stay home and watch election returns that evening, and hopefully you'll all get to vote as well. Thank you. Right now, yes, Maggie, I'm sorry.
Can you just clarify, so there's not going to be committee meetings?
On November 3rd.
Okay.
November 3rd. It was on the original schedule.
No, I guess, are we getting it on another night?
What we're doing is, if we find that there's a need for PP and C to meet for any emergency reason or curriculum, we'll set aside November 10th for that. But as of now, we don't see a need for it at this point in time.
Understood. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you. Travis, did you have something you wanted to add?
Well, just a little off-topic comment, and certainly deference to you, Helen, but, you know, we discussed facilities, and Dan has been a trooper through this entire meeting without, you know, having to be a part of a whole lot here, but he's still sitting and listening to us talk about other things. So I didn't know if we wanted to extend the option to Dan, that thank you for all your hard work. You've kind of come front and center with the HVAC work and have come through in spades, in my opinion. But do we want to extend to him the option to log off and maybe catch the end of the Celtics game here before the evening is over?
Oh, I forgot they were on tonight, Rusty as well. Please, feel free. Okay, thanks, guys. Good suggestion, Travis. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Travis, thank you for that. I think I've learned more about HVAC from Dan than I ever cared to, so.
Great job during this pandemic. So thank you so much for that. We appreciate everything.
Absolutely. Thank you. As I had mentioned earlier in the meeting, normally, we have public input. We're going to open the chat box for any of the public. I'm going to ask again, we're not doing any Q and A, simply if you had a comment you wanted to make, and we are going to limit the comments to one per person, as we normally would during a board meeting. So I'll ask Dr. Ryan to open that chat box for a few minutes and see if there's any public input.
It is now open.
Thank you. All right. I am not seeing anything coming in.
Nope.
Nope. Nope. All right. Seeing none. Is there any other business to come before the meeting? Melissa, I see you have your hand raised.
Well, I just wanted to say that since you had on the agenda, you know, changing the calendar anyway, did you, did you say you wanted to change our meeting? That was Tuesday, December 22nd?
No, I did not.
Oh, come on, Helen.
I'm not sure. That's, you know what, Melissa, that's only if necessary. That meeting, we have Tuesday, December 22nd as a TBD. We save that night in the event that we can't get our budget workshop done on December 8th. So we may not need that night. So if that's a TBD, that's why it's on there. Okay? If that makes you feel bad. Okay. I hear you. I understand. I'm seeing, I want, one individual did put something up here. I love the Exeter High School teachers. That's from Jay Jones. Thank you so much. We will pass that message along. We appreciate it. All righty. I will, at this point in time, if there's no other business to come before the meeting, entertain the motion to adjourn.
No mood.
Okay.
No, no.
Melissa?
Just, I just want to double check. We discussed remote learning and I heard, I heard the administrator say that it's going well. I know that we have some folks that are concerned about it. Maybe they've had different experiences and they're looking for when the schools are going to open up. But I had thought that this day, we were at least just going to visit, visit when we're going to revisit possibly reopening the schools. Does that make sense?
I don't believe that's been determined yet. Am I right, Dr. Ryan?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. All right. But we are going, we are keeping in touch with our administration and they're keeping us informed and that will absolutely be our top priority.
Yep, we have a written plan here that we're still working on. We're just not ready to release it because we want to ensure that all of our dates.
Right. Exactly. Thank you. All right then. Maggie, you made a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Second.
Kim, all right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Good night, everybody. Thank you so much. All right.